I'll go ahead and flip here and welcome everybody to the September fourteenth. City of Tuolotin regular city council meeting. Now, we just wrapped up our work session, so we'll start up with our agenda. And for this meeting, gotta rejigger my head here. Well, go ahead. And so we have an announcement and that's Our Home, Our Health event. And is that Garrett?
That's Aquila.
Aquila.
Hello, um, is it okay? I would like to share my screen for just a minute. And let's see, give me just a second to get this looking properly. There we go. Okay. Um, so thank you, Mayor and Council. I just want to make an announcement about an upcoming event. This year, we're calling it Our Home, Our Health. It's on September thirtieth and which is a Wednesday. Um, at six o'clock, it's going to be an online webinar and you can go to this. Tiny URL or you could just go to the city website and I think it will be on the calendar. The purpose of the meeting is twofold. One, it's to address our requirements by the state to hold a meeting that talks about the impacts of severe rent burden and what are some possible solutions? And it, the second, second purpose of the meeting is it really gives us a way to connect with our community, to hear about people's lived experiences and to hear what it can be like to try to rent in Tuolotin. So fifty-six percent of our residents spend more than thirty percent of their budget on housing, which qualifies as cost burdened. And twenty-seven percent are severely cost burdened, meaning that they pay more than fifty percent of their household income on rent. So we're looking forward to this discussion. Counselor Reyes has graciously agreed to provide an introduction and a welcome. We have a keynote speaker from Oregon AARP. And we have a panel of two members of the Diversity Task Force who are also Tuolotin residents. So please join us and if you have questions, you can reach out to me or Karen Pearl Fox, who is managing the project for us. So, thank you.
Any questions for Aquila? I imagine my screen flips here in a second. Bridgette.
Um, thank you for hosting it. I think the intersection of housing and stress and health, obviously, is something that is really important for people to understand how much stress people are under when they're housing insecure and rent burdened. My question is, how, how are we inviting people so that we make sure? How do we, what was our reach out process so that we make sure that people that fall in under this category are able to come in and be part of the conversation so that we can hear from them?
Um, that's a great question. So we're doing as much and as broad as communication as we can. We have social media campaigns. So you'll see posts on all of our social media. I think there's a specific post going out to the Diversity Task Force and really a request to the Diversity Task Force to help spread the word amongst their community members, their, their neighbors. And so I believe there was an advertisement taken out into all it in life as well. So we're really trying to kind of cover, cover the gamut of different types of, of media to make sure we reach different populations.
Thanks again.
Did you mention Aquila, it's gonna be in both English and Spanish?
Right. I actually, I don't think I mentioned that, but so thank you for bringing that up. It will be in both English and Spanish. We will have simultaneous translation happening.
All right, cool. Any other questions for Aquila? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So next item up is our public comment. Public comment is an opportunity for anyone to address the council regarding an item that is not on tonight's agenda. Please keep your comments to about three minutes. If there's anyone in the Zoom meeting or at the poll center who would like to address the council, this would be the appropriate time. Uh, do we have anyone at the poll center right now?
Uh, no mayor, there's no one at the poll center to speak.
And is anybody inside the Zoom land here who wants to speak to you or that you're aware of?
Also, there is no one on the Zoom meeting who would like to speak.
All right. Then moving on, next item is consent agenda. These items are considered routine. They will be adopted by one motion unless someone in the council would like an item removed and heard separately later tonight. Tonight, the consent agenda consists of item number one, consideration for approval of the city council work session and regular meeting minutes of August tenth, twenty twenty and August twenty-fourth, twenty twenty. Item number two, consideration of resolution number five, five, two, zero, dash, two, zero, authorizing the city manager to enter into an intergovernmental agreement and IGA with the Oregon Department of Land Conservation and Development, DLCD, to provide the city with consultant assistance for a housing production strategy and housing code updates. Would any council like any item from the consent agenda withdrawn?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read. Second.
I have a motion, a second to approve the council, the, the consent agenda as read. Any discussions on the motions? Okay, all those who's in favor say aye, starting with Counselor Kellogg.
Aye.
Counselor Brooks.
Aye.
Counselor Morrison.
Yes.
Counselor Reyes.
Yes.
Counselor President Grimes.
Aye.
And I vote aye also. Why do I feel like I missed somebody?
Valerie, I vote aye.
There you are. Counselor Pratt, I knew, I was like, I'm a little light on the name calling here.
Usually I'm first.
And you vote?
Aye.
I vote aye also. All right. Nice to see you on my screen. All right. So moving on, special reports. Uh, item number one is our annual report from the Tuolotin Arts Advisory Committee. And I see Buck Braden name is here and Julie and Ross. Whoa, everybody's here.
Hi there. Good evening. Um, good evening, council, mayor, Bubanik and members of council. It's been a while since I've seen all of you. Um, Buck Braden is here. I know he is having some technical difficulties. So I'm going to get him the call in number real quick and see if he can get in there. Um, but in the meantime, I'm going to share my screen. We are here. Um, I'm here on behalf of the Tuolotin Arts Advisory Committee and Buck will be presenting the annual report. So I'm going to share my screen and then I'm going to text Buck the, uh, call in number. So hopefully you can all see my screen here.
Brett, you're supposed to teach him how to do this stuff.
All right.
I know Brett's on the arts committee also.
Yes. Maybe, uh, actually what we might do is Brett, since you're here, how do you feel about giving the, uh, how do you feel about giving the annual report?
I'd be happy to do it.
All right, why don't we do that? So, um, can you see the presentation on your screen?
Yes.
Excellent. So when you are ready to proceed to the next slide, let me know and I will, go ahead and advance that screen.
That sounds good.
Alrighty. Okay, well Buck, I'm sorry, go ahead Brett, go ahead and take it away.
Um, so I do not have a script or anything prepared?
So just for counsel, Buck is winging, I'm sorry, not Buck, Brett is winging it here. Um, I will fill in as needed and Brett, let me know when you're ready to move on to the next, the next slide.
Sure.
Brett, I don't want to put you in the spot. Would you prefer we get ahold of Buck or?
Yes, that would be great, but I don't want to get us have to wait.
But I'm not sure if he's able to access his email while he is also on the call.
Okay.
So, um, I'm trying to get that for him. So why don't we go ahead and just let, let Brett go ahead and get started. And Brett, you did get to see this at our last arts advisory meeting. Um, so we can, we'll, we'll do our best.
All right, go hit it.
Alrighty.
So we are the Tuolotin Arts Advisory Committee and our mission is to support, connect and inspire the creation and integration of all art forms into our city's rich cultural heritage and vibrant future. We believe that involvement in the arts creates more energetic, engaging, welcoming, livable community. And further, we believe that art itself facilitates strong communities through connection, culture, creativity, imagination and inspiration. And this mission statement is something I believe we created this year. So it's new material. Next slide.
Thank you.
Currently Buck is the chair, Janet Steger Carr is the vice chair and members are Don Upton, myself, Mason Hall, Kathleen Silaway, Mahadi and council liaison Bridget Brooks. Next slide. So we've been having monthly meetings, um, getting used to this new Zoom format. Uh, we represent Tuolotin Arts to the council and to the public. We attend and host activities and events. We encourage opportunities for arts recognition and we stimulate private and public support for the arts. Next slide. So nineteen, twenty nineteen, twenty accomplishments, we put on the Viva Tuolotin Arts Multicultural Festival. Um, we, we, um, commissioned a storm drain mural installation over at Iback Park. That was the, on the previous slide, it's like a Hawaiian. Uh, theme is very cool. Um, sidewalk art, we are implementing some stamped concrete art when the city is putting in new sidewalks and we're commissioned or sought art from the community, both children and adults and everybody. And we're trying to match up, um, people who live in the community with the sidewalks that are going in. So people can say, hey, I made that. Uh, we have the Community Engagement, Community Enhancement Award and Financial Support to Arts Agencies. And a couple of us have been serving on the Veterans Memorial Stakeholder Committee. Next slide.
And Brett will be speaking to that shortly. So, thank you Brett.
So Viva Tuolotin was September fourteenth of twenty nineteen. We had music and dance, food and a number of artists vendor booths. And it was a wild success. Next slide. So here's one of the storm drain murals. Um, this was, this is artist Emily Wims, I believe, on Martin Azzi right in front of the library.
Correct.
This one's newer and then the other one is the Iback Park. Um, and I cannot pronounce her name, Fernandez.
That is Lehuua Uakea Fernandez.
There we go. Fantastic.
And the Storm Drain mural project is done in conjunction with Tuolotin River Keepers. And so it's kind of also helps to address their mission of drawing attention to the Tuolotin River and the fact that all of our storm drains actually drain into the, the Tuolotin River.
Did I hear Buck on the line?
I heard Buck. You probably did. I had a heck of a time getting in.
Oh, good.
Can you see the screen?
You're doing a great job.
Buck, why don't we let you continue now as chair? So if you can see the screen. Um, I'm now on the Community Enhancement Award slide.
Okay, well, can you hear me now?
We sure can.
Okay. Community Enhancement Awards, uh, is to better promote and recognize significant art endeavors within the Tuolotin community and, uh, this time that we awarded it to S and A Irish Entertainment who do quite a bit of that, uh, teach lessons and that kind of thing over at the Grange and also Trimest to refurbish the, uh, uh, the Mohawk Park and ride salmon. Um, this is something that happened way back in nineteen ninety-seven and it kind of escaped our notice for a while and, uh, uh, but it's a very nicely refurbished, redone and, and really worthwhile to go up and see. And probably was really spinning during our last little bout of winds. Next slide. Uh, we support various, um, agencies in the community and, and close by and, and, uh, uh, one of those is the Tuolotin Historical Society and we've done this for several years. Um, so this year was, uh, no different. And we support the Tuolotin Valley Symphony and perhaps some of you heard the, uh, the little, uh, symphony for, for Tuolotin and of course S and A Irish Entertainment. Then also a group of actors, Wilson State, Wilsonville Stage. Next slide. Our twenty, twenty twenty and twenty-one goals are to expand, expand on our storm grain art program. We've got that started as Brett was saying and, uh, complete the Southwest Martin Ozzy Traffic Box Wrap installation. I've, I've seen a, uh, a hard copy of that and that's pretty fantastic. Uh, we want to install a street mural and still working on that and identify future arts programs and, uh, projects continued and continue to support local arts programming through grants and awards. So, uh, we've got quite a bit on our plate and, uh, more to do later. So, next slide.
And that is the last slide.
That is the last slide. Okay.
Last slide. So I want to say thank you, um, thank you Brett for jumping in at a moment's notice. And thank you Buck for, for troubleshooting and getting in the call in number there. And, uh, thank you council and all of our, our wide audience for, uh, hanging in there with our technical difficulties. I appreciate it.
Questions for Buck? Comments?
Thank you.
I'm gonna lead it off, let Bridgette speak first and since her council liaison position, so Counselor Brooks.
Oh, I just want to say that, um, that I've been really fortunate to be the liaison to this particular committee. And, um, I'm not surprised that Brett could jump in at a moment's notice. All of our committee members come to every meeting. They're so dedicated. They're very creative and they're, they're, they represent a diverse, um, group of artists with many different mediums from technical, very technical, um, art to, um, performing arts to visual arts. So we in Tuolotin are extremely fortunate to have such an amazing, oh, and we had a student member this year as well. So we, uh, in Tuolotin are, um, very fortunate to have such an amazing dedicated group of volunteers on this committee. And, um, and I also want to thank them for their thoughts around how to support artists and the arts during these difficult times and for being able to rework their mission and their, um, traditional way of doing, um, uh, festivals to be more inclusive without a moment's hesitation. So it's truly a pleasure to work with each and every one of you and, um, and I just want to say thank you and thank you for the report.
I saw Counselor Pratt's hand up.
Um, yes, well, first I do want to thank you for all your efforts to beautify and enhance our city. It's just great to see that storm drain and Viva Tuolotin was a wonderful event. Um, I just have a question though, what is exactly is a street mural?
Buck, you want to take that? It's Buck not here. I'll take it. So a street mural is a basically a visual art painting on the ground, like on, on the street surface, either usually not on the sidewalk, but actually out in the, on the asphalt. Um, lots of times they're put at an intersection to sort of mark the place, make it a distinct location. I think the site we're looking at is over by the splash pad. There's this kind of a ninety degree corner that's like a big driving circle where people come and park. That's the site that we are thinking about. One of the big considerations is don't want a bunch of people driving over it because it wears it out quicker. So that doesn't have tons of through traffic. So it's like kind of a place that could work.
Thank you. That's a great location.
Other questions or comments for Brett slash Buck? Paul?
Yeah, very much along the same line. What, what is the Martin Ozzy, um, I'm definitely in a box wrap, I think you called it. What, what exactly is that?
There is a large signal utility box that's I think on the lawn outside the, outside the library. It's just a black box that nobody really even sees. And the idea is it's a potential canvas for putting public art. So, um, there is a company that takes, you can take a painting and they'll print it on a PVC wrap, like a shrink wrap thing and, and wrap the whole box in your painting. And then it becomes a work of art, a visual place to see art. And it's a very accessible way because that's a very busy part of the, the city.
So is, is this the beginning of a trend? I, I would hope that we find other boxes that can be wrapped?
Yes, this is a proof of concept, kind of do once, see how it works and then awesome, the thought is we could scale it up and do it all over the city.
That, that's terrific. Again, uh, you know, you, you don't hear it from us enough because we get lost in our, in our own work. But thanks for all that the committee does Buck, um, and Brett and, and, uh, the work that the staff does to make this happen and to be involved and what you guys do is just, I think is fantastic. And I know you, um, over the years, you've gotten a lot of pushback because I still remember I was not a counselor, but I remember somebody, uh, commenting at a council meeting that why were we spending money on art? And I just, um, and the answer is because it is so desperately needed. And I think this, this year is a great example of, of the great work you're doing, the, um, and, and how good it is for the community. So thank you so much, Brett.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Uh, I also want to thank you Brett and Buck. I know the time you guys put into this as well as the whole committee. Um, like Counselor Morrison, I'm intrigued by the utility box wraps. Uh, I've seen them in other cities or tremendously popular in Colorado, in Idaho. I've seen them even in Montana, uh, where it features art from local artists or the scenery from your town. And I think it's a terrific idea and beautifies otherwise a gray boring box. Uh, it's a lot more visually aesthetic than that, like you're saying Brett, an ugly, you know, black or gray box. So
Mm-hmm.
order more of these.
Excellent. Hope it works well.
Anything else? Well, thank you Buck, uh, for coming. Brett, you have to stay. Cause you're on the next, I think you're part of the, uh, next item on the agenda.
Excellent.
Is, let me scroll back up. General business, which is consideration of approval of the Veterans Memorial Report. And this is led by Ross and I'm assuming Ross and Rich and then I know Brett's part of the committee. I was part of the committee. I'm not speaking, I'm listening, but go ahead Ross.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, counselors. Appreciate, uh, the time tonight to, uh, come back to you with the continued conversation about Veterans Memorial and the work that our community has done over the past, uh, almost year now, uh, when we first started this work. We're joined tonight, Rich Mueller's here and then Brett, of course, will be speaking as a, as a committee member, but also as an arts committee rep. And then Kristen Sacco was also with us. She was also on the committee will also be speaking, um, and is also a T-Park, uh, but the vice chair of the T-Park committee. So thank you. Uh, so first slide here, just the intro slide looks, uh, nice as I, as I welcome everybody in. Um, but really wanted to give you a quick overview. You've seen these slides before and, uh, the, the first time we, we had come to you, uh, when we concluded this work in around June, uh, started in October of nineteen, so almost a year now. And, uh, really concluded in June, the committee, I'll tell you that the stakeholder advisory committee for this, for this project, this, uh, really, really developing the themes, concepts and, and objectives behind the work. Um, considering sites, looking at different sites and assessing those different sites, uh, and defining what the program, the program definition, what is this and what is it not? And then evaluating the sites and, and, uh, making a recommendation for a site. So that's the overview and the, and the stakeholder advisor committee meeting did a fantastic job transitioning from in-person meetings to, to online and, and really didn't skip a beat. And so we're really appreciative for, for everybody on that, on that committee. Here's an overview of the process. So started with, with focused meetings. So we, we gathered groups throughout our community, focused on big ideas and brainstorming and then three different rounds of, of input started, kicked off each round with a stakeholder advisory committee meeting, uh, uh, community wide public meeting and then a survey. And then what was gathered in each round rolled into the next round of work. And so it was really an iterative process that ultimately resulted in, um, I just lost the screen. There we go. That looks good on my screen. Does everybody see that? Outstanding. Um, and then, and then of course, the, um, the survey tool is really valuable with this project because we were able to reach a lot of people, especially during COVID. And so the, the technology we had at our disposal was, was really helpful. Um, brought that back to you, uh, that final report back to you. Um, and here we are tonight to talk about, uh, that final report. So you all have that in your packet. You also have, um, this slide presentation kind of gives you a quick summary of what's in that, what's in that, um, packet, that report. So really the, the, this is the product. This is what it is and what it isn't. And that was really the focus of our work is defining, defining what this is, conceptualizing it and finalizing it in a report. And so really, really the community said, uh, through this process was that all military service members and branches, military family members, freedom and peace, not war and hidden heroes. That, um, as, as, as people serve, as they serve and, and sacrifice, that there is a support mechanism behind each, each person that serves that is, is family, friends. Um, that, that really, what we heard was that element really needs to be recognized through this. Um, what it is not is that it's not an emphasis on war or violence, uh, that we should avoid overwhelming information, um, that we should, uh, not focus on first responders and, and no references to conflicts. Um, and so that was really, um, a common element that we heard throughout, especially our survey tools. And the core themes of this, um, product is that the, the site should provide connection, demonstrate shared values, really engage our community through the site and, and make it a timeless and, and a really quality experience. And the next slide is the site. So Rich is going to take it from here. He's going to talk about the sites and, and the process of evaluation and some more information on the overall process and tools we, we use. Go ahead, Rich.
Thank you. Good evening. Um, system wide city parkland was considered and narrowed down to these eight sites. And that was really through a process of, um, assessing and evaluating, considering criteria that included the background information of the site, site observations by the consultants, the master plan goals, distance from public facilities, access, access to public transit, parking, ADA accessibility, water access, existing pedestrian paths and trails, tree cover, ambient noise and the demographics of the area. And so taking all that information that went to the stakeholders advisory committee and the stakeholders advisory committee also applied what, what was referred to as a design program, but what is really site attributes. And so they felt that in, and again, the stakeholders advisory committee, I believe had nine out of sixteen veterans on it, but they felt, um, a gathering space for up to about fifty people is needed. Some passive spaces, um, space for solitude. Um, in, in area for small group interaction or storytelling, um, some kind of recreational connection, a dedication area, um, interpretive elements, some signage. interpretive elements, some signage, twenty-five cars, maximum parking, and access to um, public transit. Oh. One too many there. Okay, back on track there. And and so all this information was taken and the Stakeholders Advisory Committee narrowed those eight sites down into what they considered three preferred site locations. And the sites based on those site attributes and in what the committee felt were needed for successful veterans memorial facility um, narrowed it down to these three sites. And so Toallerton Commons, Brownsbury Park, and Sweet Pond were the locations that um, the the majority of the committee agreed on, and there is a consensus to move these three sites forward to the public for their input and engagement. Um, and and that led us to survey number three. And it was open for three weeks. We had over two hundred and fifty people participate and received just under ninety comments about all kinds of things um, related to a memorial. You can see Toallerton Commons, over fifty percent, Sweet Pond, right around thirty, and Brownsbury with fifteen percent of the public that took the survey um, wanting the memorial to be at that site. Other community engagement throughout the process of the memorial project, um, Ross referred to the focus groups that started it out. Those were with veterans organizations, business organizations. Um, we had had our advisory committees. There was a youth focus group. Outreach um, for the public was held at Starry Nights and the library pop-up. There were four Stakeholder Advisory Committee meetings. And again, sixteen members, nine of them being veterans. Two community engagement meetings. We had three scheduled, one due to the health pandemic um, was canceled. And we really rolled that information up into survey number two and survey number three. There are three surveys with um, just under seven hundred people participating. Our our total eleven meetings, three surveys, two events, over nine hundred people participated um, in the public engagement process. Public information used the tools that we typically use to get notification to community members in Toallerton and online, social, print, and um, media. Like, there were several articles in the paper about it and and really reached out and there were thousands of people reached through notifications of public information using those four different um, methods to to reach, reach community members. The next steps, um, specific, site-specific development and design at Toallerton Commons with another layer of public engagement. And again, this is based on the report. Um, and in selection of schematic design. So that's the site-specific design. Um, we'll come up with a couple of them, and then the preferred design will move into determining construction costs and then identifying funding opportunities. None of the next steps have funding at this point in time. With with that, we have two advisory committee members, uh, first Brett Hamilton and then Kristen Seiko um, to speak with you about the process and their experience. Um, so with that, go ahead, Brett. I will stop sharing here if I can figure out how. There we go.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. My name is Brett Hamilton, and I serve on the Toallerton Arts Advisory Committee, and it was an honor to to the to participate in the Veterans Memorial Stakeholder Advisory Committee. I was impressed by the wisdom and judgment of all who participated. The selection criteria articulated by city staff that generated the initial list of possible sites was well reasoned and well thought out. Uh, our committee did a great job evaluating all these sites for practical and environmental factors with a memorial in mind, and I believe that the three best options were selected. I was happy to see how much public interest and participation the surveys received. I think the public made a great choice, and I fully support both the process and outcome. As a bonus, the specific area of the Toallerton Commons that was selected is in need of improvement. And I think a memorial would be an excellent use for this site. It seems to me like a great match of site and use. Thank you.
Hello, Mayor and Counselors. My name is Kristen Sacco, and I am the Vice Chair of T-Park. And as a wife and daughter of a veteran, I was proud to represent T-Park on the Veterans Memorial Stakeholders Advisory Committee. Over the course of eight months, I attended every committee meeting. Therefore, I do feel confident when I say the process in developing the Veterans Memorial Report and site selection was very thorough. The Stakeholders Committee was comprised of nine veterans, park and park and art advisory committee members, and also a member of the youth. Approximately a thousand people participated in the public engagement process, which included focus groups, pop-up activities, surveys, and community meetings. Thousands of community members were reached through social media, website, email, print, and media notifications. As a commu- community, we narrowed down who the memorial should honor, core themes, what the memorial is not, and site selection. Throughout the entire process, the Parks Department was transparent with the community members, stakeholders, and council. The community agreed the space needed to hold up to fifty people, have intimate and passive spaces, include a dedication area, and parking for twenty-five cars, and be accessible via public transportation. The committee narrowed down the site to three locations, Sweet Pond, Brownsbury, and Toallerton Commons. The survey was open for three weeks, and Toallerton Commons was overwhelmingly preferred by the community, receiving thirty-five percent of the vote from two hundred and sixty-two participants. And we believe that Toallerton Commons meets all the agreed-upon needs. Um, I've heard there may be concerns with parking, with the exception of a couple remembrance days. The space is not expected to see large gatherings. If the Commons can handle parking for events like the Pumpkin Regatta, Starry Night, Concerts on the Commons, we feel it can handle parking for Days like Memorial Day and Veterans Day. Plus, this is a great opportunity to bring additional traffic to the businesses located near the Commons. I ask that you please approve the Veterans Memorial Report and Site Selection, as it was formally recommended to council by T-Park, and it was completed by utilizing a transparent democratic process. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Kristen. Uh, future counselor Kristen Sacco over there. Um, Ross and Rich, do you have anything else to add or?
Yeah, yeah, thank you, Kristen and Brett. Um, and again, Brett, appreciate your uh, ability to improvise earlier tonight at tonight's meeting. So just glad you were here um, for this. Um, yeah, just that that uh, we wanted to make sure that, you know, that the the site um, that's recommended in the report through this process at the Commons. Um, the the Commons is a is a um, gathering space for our community. Um, but what we want to be sure of is that that um, adding or or changing the amenities that currently exist there and making it, making this space a veterans uh, memorial area, that there that the impacts of that are manageable. And so we have um, we are on the agenda for the Core Area Board uh, in October. So we will be visiting with the Core Area Board to talk about uh, potential impacts of of changing the space from what it currently is to uh, a theme, the themes that that came out of this process. So we we are happy to answer any questions or provide any clarification as you desire.
So since this is for public comment too, Base, is there anybody in the Poll Center who wants to this? Have any comments on the memorial?
Uh, no, Mayor. There's no one in the Poll Center to make comments or
The
Just been list.
I'm just looking at the people who are here. And no one in Zoom land here who wants to chat about this um, report?
Correct.
All right. Then I'll open it up to the floor to counselors for questions and comments. Wow. You knocked them dead here, I think. Uh, Bridget?
I just want to say thank you to everybody that worked on it, and thank you especially Brett and Kristen. Um, I I think that these public engagement, just going to um, several of the meetings for different types of public engagement. It's a lot of work. It's a lot of effort. It's a lot of debate. And um, people are passionate about their community. And um, so being part of that conversation, it's kind of like being on city council, being part of that conversation and um, and advocating for um, good use of where we're going to have our veterans memorials really appreciated, especially with um, the background that you both have and all the people, over a thousand people that were engaged in the process. So I just want to thank um, not only the volunteers, but also the Parks Department for more outstanding work. There's a lot of challenges with the Parks Department, and every time you're involved, the leadership seems to be involved in something. They just do um, a very thorough, transparent job. So I just want to say thank you.
Other questions, some comments? I'll throw my, go ahead, Robert.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. I want to echo Counselor Brooke's sentiments about uh, the scope of the participation. Uh, it's obvious that a lot of great work was done here, uh, and very thorough work at that. Um, the only item that I'll mention that I brought up in the past and and was addressed by several of the comments um, is the parking, and and it's not only uh, on a regular basis, but also during construction. Uh, and I'd like, you know, Ross to to keep that in mind as as we move forward. And I know construction is, you know, not immediate, but over the horizon that that what disruptions that might create and and how we might uh, um, offset some of that. Uh, and I hope that the analysis on the regular parking holds true uh, and that this doesn't become an issue for the businesses that are paying down there. Uh, I trust that that will be the outcome, and so I look forward to seeing this built uh, in the years to come. Thank you.
Questions or comments? Counselor President Grimes? And then Maria?
Thank you. Um, I'd like to echo everyone's sentiments about um, thanks and uh, kudos for the planning, the implementation, and the process, and the inclusion, and um, I think that was very well done. Um, I think the merit of the project is, you know, outstanding. And I just want to say that you know, whatever the city can provide, whatever we as a council can help to support in addition to what is already out there, I'm all in favor of. Um, I think that this is a an interesting area, and I think it has a ton of potential as far as, you know, the way that it can sort of be remodeled to um, fit the importance of the project that we're talking about. And I just whatever types of resources that the city can bring, any types of funding that we can look at to support, whether it's from the city, the city private, a community funding, even a GoFundMe, whatever it is that we can do. Um, I'm all in for supporting that and helping out with that. And um, I'm really happy with the process, and I'm happy with the location, and I'm just so proud that we're going to be able to have something like this, kind of in the city's um, living room, so that it it has the support and it has the um, the accessibility to everybody, that it can kind of be a top-of-mind and top-of-heart awareness. I'm just really proud of the work that was done. And I just want to make sure that we have enough resources against this project, that we're able to come up with something that is equal to the merit of the project and that can be done quickly and efficiently and in a very timely manner. So I just want to put out there that I'm all in support. So anything that we can give to the committee and the project, I'm in. So thank you guys very much, very much.
Counselor Reyes?
Yeah, I too want to echo what everyone is saying. I do uh, like the location as well. Um, there are already plants and benches around there uh, based on what I'm looking at the, at the uh, from, from the map there. Um, is there going to be a big dramatic change? I mean, are they going to remove these plants? And I'm just just wondering how that's going to look like. And if it's, is it big enough? I don't know. I mean, I've been there a couple of times in that area, just specifically, I I wonder if it's going to be big enough, or are we going to remove space there that to accommodate some of the um, items that we're going to add for the veterans? Just wondering, I I'm not, I guess, haven't seen a visual texture, way of how it's going to look. I'm pretty sure you guys are going to make it great. I'm just wondering if the plants and and the benches are there, going to be rearranged, or how that is going to start.
Thank you, Counselor Reyes. Um, so so the exact design of this space won't happen until the sort of the next phase of the project. And so uh, we would design that uh, not in a, not in a closed environment, but that that design would very much happen with community involvement and engagement, much like, much like this process was, heavy, heavy um, comments, um, key stakeholders, surveys, and uh, using that information to to lead the design and what it looks like. Um, one of the key themes of this project, of course, is is um, a a relaxing uh, introspective, reflective um, environment. And so I'm I am sure that um, plants will be part of that. And so, but I can't, I can't say exactly what that will look like at this point. Um, be able to to come back to you when once we start that next phase in the future. Um, and um, and provide some more insight there. But what I can tell you is that the the access to that space will improve. Um, right now, it's it's asphalt that has been lifted by roots of trees and things. So it's real, it's really not easy to walk through this area. And so this, this actually creates a more accessible space. Um, a higher quality, a whole higher quality experience, certainly, um, than than what's there now.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments? Counselor Morrison?
Yeah, I just real quickly want to thank everyone involved. And uh, just a shout out um, to Rich and all the great work that you have done for years, Rich. And also, Ross, I just want to take you down memory lane to when you first started here at the beginning of the Park Master Plan. And I'm sure you said, wow, I hope there's not more like this. And you just, what we keep bringing to you and what you keep handling um, is absolutely fantastic. And you've been up to the challenge. You have put on just an amazing uh, public outreach to everything that you've done and that you've worked with. And I think you've made, at the end of the day, everybody is really happy with with what goes on. And yeah, forget, I know in the background, I'm sure there's somebody who says, well, wait, I don't like I don't like the word you used in that sentence, but um, I love the project. And I I love the work that you and and the entire committee was able um, to put together uh, for this community. And I'm not a veteran, but I have uncles who served in World War II. I have nephews who were in the Air Force and and I'm just am really, really proud that the city is going to be able to bring this forward. And my challenge to you, Ross, is the funding. And I am happy and will be available, as as Counselor Grimes said, any any help that you need in any shape, form, or way to get this thing funded. Um, I'm happy to chip in.
Hey, thank you, Counselor Morrison. Um, yeah, Rich, Rich did a fantastic job on this project and leading this project. Um, and uh, all all of our staff did did a great job. But really, this is, this is the product of that Stakeholder Advisory Committee and that and that and that robust public process. And, and really, this is the community's space. And in, in, in our, it's our community's response to how do we honor those who serve and sacrifice for us? And, and that's really what this represents.
Any other questions or comments? I'll just quick throw in that in addition to park staff doing a terrific uh, job here, I, I want to call specifically Jenny and Giselle of uh, Shapiro Didway. They um, I thought it was pretty unique how they facilitated meetings. Was wondering how they were going to do it. And the way they did the meetings was quite interesting to me. I've never seen facilitation like it was done there. And it brought the whole committee together quite quickly. And uh, our smaller groups working around tables and all the different exercises they did, they were able to rapidly move the committee from a very high level topic all the way down, you know, through the months to, you know, site selection. Uh, so I just want to also remember them that uh, in the future uh, if we ever need kind of facilitation in, in their wheelhouse, they did a terrific job. I, my hat's off to them because when we first started, started talking about this, I had no idea how facilitators were going to do this. And they knocked it out of the ballpark for me. So I just want to thank them also. So anything else?
Ross, aren't we using them for the Stone Ridge Park?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Sherilyn. Um, so we, we, we worked with Shapiro Didway on this, on the Veterans Memorial Project. They also bring a, a key set of relationships with them. And so we've selected them for the Stone Ridge Park redesign that, that Rich is currently leading that process.
Perfect. I'm looking forward to that one too. All right. Any other questions for staff? Motions?
I motion that we approve the veterans memorial report.
Second.
I have a second. Sean, did we say approve it? How do we accept it? What's the right legal lingo for this?
Yeah, they're both okay.
All right. So I have a motion, a second to approve and accept the veterans memorial report. Uh, do we have any discussion on those motions? Seeing none, I'll start off with my screen here. Uh, Council Kellogg.
Hi.
Council Brooks.
Hi.
Council Pratt.
Ace.
Uh, Council Reyes.
Yes.
Council Morrison.
Yes.
Council President Grimes.
Aye.
And I vote aye also. So it's unanimously accepted. Thank you all for your work on this and uh, as other counselors said, I look forward to the next steps here and figuring this out and making this happen in the hopefully close future. All right. But moving on, we are now up to council communications, which we uh, ran out of time during work session. So I'll go ahead and kick that off with uh, Council Kellogg.
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing to report.
What? Council Brooks.
Um, I, I just, well, I just want to thank again all the volunteers. I mean, tonight I'm especially touched with the Twolton Arts um, Committee and all the work that those committee members jump onto these other committees and you know, it's just um, it, it's, it's just, I feel very fortunate to live in our community. And it's been a rough time with the fires, with the smoke, with the COVID, with all these things that we're facing as a community. But I'm really proud of our community that we come together and do things that are safe and, you know, um, look out for each other. All the different agencies and organizations that we looked at tonight for funding do such incredible work and people are in need right now. So it really is an honor to serve as a counselor and I just sometimes really feel it um, in meetings like tonight. I want to say that um, it's a privilege to work on the, I talked about um, that I was uh, tapped to be part of the TIP uh, Committee, which is the planning committee that is helping plan the Metro Housing Bond money for Washington County. I've gone to two meetings since our last council meeting. The first meeting was mostly discussing how this 21 member board, which I'm the only elected official on that committee, by the way. So um, so it's different than some of the other committee work that we do as counselors. And I just wanted to let you guys know that. So the first uh, meeting, we talked about how we were going to vote. And the second meeting, we talked mostly about where we were at, what the kind of um, money and management expectations Metro has and how we're going to move through the process. And we're going to be doing very short turnaround community engagement. That's what's coming up next. Um, so I just wanted you all to know that. Um, my PAB meeting was postponed till this week, but I did forward an email uh, to the council about um, mortgage assistance program. There's information, I'm sure it'll be available somewhere in the city website. So if people, and uh, I just want to urge people, if you, the community, if you think that you uh, would like to apply for the mortgage assistance program through Washington County, please do so quickly. Uh, they anticipate money to run quickly. It just opened today. So it's fortunate that we can announce it today. Um, and that, but that's happening. And then I'll be meeting this week also uh, with PAB for more follow-up on COVID uh, money as well as uh, the arts committee. And I just want to thank again the arts committee, all the members for their dedication and commitment to our community. Thank you.
Council Pratt. You're still muted.
There we go. Um, I wanted to mention that um, we, we were fortunate to give some money to great organizations. And one of those was Meals on Wheels. And they're having their 50th anniversary celebration next Thursday. And um, it's a gala celebration. It'll be via Zoom, but you can also um, order a meal that comes with some really nice wine to be delivered to your house that you can prepare or, you know, pretty much made and you just heat it up. Um, so if you're interested in that, it's uh, M O W P fifty dot org. You're interested in that. Um, also I wanted to mention that this is National Emergency Preparedness Month, which um, given what's been going on, that's kind of appropriate, I guess. And um, I just wanted to remind everybody that we have a great uh, CERT Community Emergency Response Team in our, in Twolton. And um, they're right now, they've added a program where um, you can get your neighbors and do a Zoom meeting and it's a little two hour, just a basic preparedness that um, I think would be great for everyone to do. But if you're interested in anything with the CERT program, if you need to contact them, uh, because you need them, um, you can go to info@twoltoncert.org, which is C E R T dot org. And um, they can help you out and you could um, be a little more prepared for um, the next upcoming um, interesting situation. Thank you. Oh, and I want to thank the mayor for reminding us what blue skies look like.
Can I jump, jump in for a second? Um, thank you, Councilor Pratt, for um, reminding me about the Emergency Preparedness Month. We will have a proclamation on the agenda on September 28th and a little presentation about that to commemorate Emergency Preparedness Month.
All right. Uh, Council Morrison?
Yeah, just a couple of quick things, although one, actually one may not be quick. Um, so the C4 um, agreed to uh, collate all the letters from the different cities, sending, uh, tolling information to their, during their open period. Twolton was the first and then our letter was used as a uh, kind of as a guide for the city of Wilsonville. And they have submitted a letter that, then the Wilsonville and Twolton's letter together were used as a guide to Westland. I have not seen Westland. I don't know what happened. I've not gotten a response back from uh, Mayor Axelrod. Um, but we're trying to encourage other cities within Clackamas County. And, and I would hope, Mayor, that some of the Washington County cities would also pipe in on, on the issues. Um, and so if any counselors are interested in those letters, we um, we can get those to you um, as they're collected. Uh, and like I said, Clackamas County uh, has agreed to kind of be the clearing point for all letters through Clackamas County. HB 2001, um, Mayor, I listened in to the Washington County Coordinating Committee today. It was uh, very interesting. Uh, very similar uh, with a lot of the comments that the Clackamas County uh, folks had. There is a, a, a comment period coming up. Um, and this is where we, we may want to spend a little time. Sorry, folks. There's a couple of issues in the proposals for HB 2001 that certainly to the city of Twolton um, are not in, in alignment with some of our current uh, uh, rules and uh, and ordinances. The, the hot button to me is, is the, is the parking issue. The mayor of Cornelius made a very uh, passionate plea uh, to uh, eliminate the requirement that you can have required no more than one parking space and calling it uh, a mistake that they made in a previous development. And that without the public transportation being close by, it's a serious uh, problem. There were some other very valid points and I, Mayor, I'll let you, you speak to them uh, to the, and, and to what the resolutions may be within Washington County. And, and some of the concerns with some of the, the comments. But that right now is the hot button, I think, for both counties because of the co- public comment period coming up next week.
Uh, Council Reyes.
Um, yeah, I really have not had any big meetings, obviously. Everything has been on hold, but the MAC uh, Committee, not the committee, but um, Tadias, who's the the TV executive director, I think, I can't remember his exact title, but um, he sends us a report about what's going on and some, just, he just wanted to remind us that there will, there are some some um, issues with fiber, simply fiber, what used to be frontier communications. Um, I believe they don't do TV, they do internet and they do phones. So um, those of you who have had frontiers and have transferred into, what, changed into simply, simply fiber, you might be having issues and they are trying to, I don't know what the problem is. I think they want to do more streaming. And so there's um, some miscommunications there that are, they're trying to clear up with um, the commissioners and the communications with all of us. So um, he's not sure when they're going to communicate, but we should have a meeting with them pretty soon. And I will let you guys know. So that's one, we, one of the his, um, something that he sent out to everyone. Um, and we can report it. In case anyone else out there is thinking that they're the only ones with the problem. No, it's everyone. And so they're trying to figure that out. Um, the other thing I want to mention, I want to thank um, the city, want to thank the um, police officer who came to my house last uh, Monday. Um, if you have not heard, I think the whole town has heard, a tree fell on, into my house and basically had a, did a whole hole into, into my bedroom. Thankfully I was not there, I was downstairs. Um, it was a scary moment, but I do want to say that um, Officer Sam Radikovic or Radikovic came by and was fantastic by, I mean, we turned off the lights, the gas, the water, and he was just very helpful and and um, came back the next day to say if I was okay. So it was a really great um, customer service and just someone who cared and and was genuinely trying to help me out here because I was freaked out. I've never seen anything like that before. But um, just want to say kudos to all of you for for calling me too. Thank you. Some of you called me and heard the news, but we're surviving. Uh, we're back home, as you can tell. Um, and we're just going to deal with the whole repairs and the insurance and all that stuff. But other than that, we're happy and we're home and just taking it one day at a time. But thank you all. Thank you to Officer Sam Radikovic. And kudos to him for helping us out. So thank you.
Council President Grimes.
Thank you. Kind of along the lines of what um, Council Reyes was just talking about. And I'm so sorry about that. That's just awful. But emergency preparedness as well as how to receive emergency information, that's probably in common with, I'm sure, the other counselors. Um, in the last week or so, the biggest thing for me have been people contacting um, me and I'm sure you guys too, and the city about how to get the most update to date information and how to be included on public alerts in the public information system, especially because the city is divided between two different counties. So I just wanted to point out that on the main page of the city of Twolton's website right now, there's um, one of the revolving panels, it has information about how to sign up for all of the public alerts for Washington County, Clackamas County, as well as a couple other um, different information sources. And it would be, I mean, it's just an easy, quick, one-stop place where you can find the information that you need to get signed up for the public alert so that you can receive either um, email, text or phone um, alerts when things are um, happening in the community. And they are very effective. Um, you know, I receive phone calls at the house with information from Clackamas County as well as uh, text and email. And it's a great way to be able to keep up, know what's going on and um, to find out the latest. And it's a 24/7 alert system. So whenever it happens, you'll find out instantly. So I would just encourage everyone that wants to know more and to be in the loop um, to go to the twoltonoregon.gov, our main city website and uh, sign up for the emergency alert systems. They're very effective, they work really well and they can save people and property. So please do that. And best of wishes and good luck to everybody to get through this last air quality challenge and hopefully we'll get on the other side of this soon. So that's what I wanted to share tonight. Thank you.
All right. Um, got a few things here, as Paul mentioned, uh, I'll get to that in a few minutes.
Can I do one before you do yours? I forgot.
You had your time, Ms. Brooks.
Just one, I just want to say one thank you to our um, Public Work Director Jeff Fox and the Water Consortium that we're part of. And they've been advocating um, for uh, conservation around uh, General Electric, trying to go around regulations for conservation with uh, washing machines and showerheads. So I just want people to know, that's a great website to go to as well for um, for water and, and emergency preparedness. But I did want to mention that they're doing good work on behalf of our water supply here, which we know during this time is vulnerable, especially uh, with the um, fires needing to be put out. Sorry, I just didn't want to forget to thank for the work.
Not a problem. All right. Um, last few weeks, um, on August 31st, uh, Chair Harrington asked for an emergency meeting with the mayors uh, to discuss the governor's request uh, to have Washington County Sheriff uh, assets deployed in Portland to help with the uh, ongoing riots there. She wanted some feedback on some plans and decisions that the county board of commissioners had made. And just wanted our feedback on it. Um, you all know that uh, Washington County Sheriff and the board uh, would not provide officers on the ground, but would offer officer support in the background. Uh, so that would free up Portland officers to uh, deal with the riots and the civil unrest in Portland. Uh, on September 2nd, the Westside Economic Alliance had its board meeting. And I sent you all the results of the board meeting where uh, the discussion was on what the position of the Westside Economic Alliance would be on Metro's Get Moving 2020 bond measure. Uh, there's quite a bit of discussion, uh, but they landed on uh, the board, uh, decided to stay neutral uh, on that. There was quite a bit of discussion, but they landed on the board, decided to stay neutral on that subject. On September 9th, I had a very enjoyable Metro, Metro Zoom meeting that was kind of put together quickly, but it was really enjoyable. Myself and Mayor Snyder had a Zoom meeting with the presidents, vice presidents of the Tiger 12th and Student Union, and also the representative of the Black Student Union. And the purpose of the meeting was just to basically a get to know you kind of thing, that they want to establish a dialogue with the two city mayors so that we can hear what they're up to, what they envision should be happening in the schools, especially when it comes to racial policy and hate speech. I really enjoyed the meeting. They let us know that they were integrally involved with the hate speech policy and that on August 24th, the policy was approved by both the school board and the student union. So they want to continue the dialogue for issues that might pipe up this year, so I'm looking forward to that. On the 10th, tough meeting was Clackamas County Chair Jim Bernard's meeting with the Clackamas mayors, the status and what's going on with the fires. Obviously, several of the mayors couldn't be there because their cities were pretty much shut down and evacuated. The challenge, I got to give credit to Chair Bernard and the Emergency Operations Center for Clackamas County because they're dealing both with fires and COVID at the same time. And I think Clackamas County has done a very good job with their phased evacuation plans. And thankfully, since what, the four days since this meeting, some of those evacuation notices have been rescinded. Sadly, you know, those cities that are still in evacuation zone three are still at risk, but it looks like the firefighters are getting an upper hand. And fingers crossed, we have rain hit here Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday to help dampen down these fires and protect people's homes. I also want to mention Towaltin Valley Fire and Rescue, which has been fighting the fire on Washington County side over in the Chehalis Mountains where they've done a tremendous job of saving a lot of property. A few barns did get burned down, but no one has been killed as far as I know, and no homes were lost. So I want to thank the firefighters who've been brought in from all over the United States. I saw pictures on Facebook of firefighters coming in from Mexico. So firefighters from all over are coming here to help out with these fires here in Oregon and in California and Washington. Then on the 11th, I met with Megan, Chief Steele, and Sherilyn to review our Obama pledge implementation. So we'll be getting some more details from Megan. She's finalizing the document fairly soon for final approval where we'll begin our public comment and our public outreach in October. Have it wrapped up by the end of the year with a report and recommendation to the city council by January of what we need to do in order to comply or meet our expectations of the pledge. I look forward to that. On Friday, we had the Washington County Mayor's Lunch, and we had two subjects there. First was Andrew Colas was there from Colas Construction, very insightful on award, I'd say, how would you put it, on municipal awards of building construction? That his firm is like, I believe, one or just a handful of 100% black owned construction company. And to this date, even though his far has been running this company and it's been handed off to him and the sisters, they've never been awarded a prime contract by any municipality. The prime contracts usually go to the well-known names here in town. And then from there, the BIPOC contractors usually get some kind of subcontractor set asides. And he says that just, he basically laid out why that's wrong and then laid out the case why a BIPOC construction company should be the prime and be better use those dollars that we want to get out to BIPOC construction firms and businesses, but doesn't seem to get quite there because of the way construction works that a prime contractor may set aside, say, $3 million to XYZ Company, which might be a woman owned or a BIPOC company. But by the end of the day, when the construction is done and the checks are written, they might have already gotten a million. So he had a slideshow that I'll share with you guys, I'll email it to you and Sherilyn. That was very eye opening on how, his suggestion of how revisions are needed to municipal bidding for construction projects. Then we got into Beaverton Planning Staff, Brian Martin and Anna Slunski reviewed HB 2001. Gave us kind of a heads up for today on what's envisioned with the rulemaking. As Council Morrison mentioned, there will be a rulemaking session beginning on September 25th at DLCD where they take input on the draft rules on implementation of HB 2001 and 2003. Cities have a lot of heartburn about two items in the rules. One is something called performance standards, which is suggested percentages of lots and what they should be used for. And the second thing is master plan communities and how that is to be implemented. Beaverton and a half all the cities and the legal Oregon cities is leading the charge along with Hillsborough to revise some of the rules because they feel it doesn't leave us a lot of flexibility. I'll get more into details here in a minute of 2001. I want to thank, got a few emails and calls last week on the 10th for a couple of businesses in town whose electricity had been out for four days. And PGE wasn't very quick in responding to them and their businesses were at risk of losing a lot of business with electricity, obviously. So the owners reached out to me and I reached out to PGE. Long story short, PG, of course, was in scramble mode between the windstorm, the fires, and everything else going on that their linesmen or linespeople, I should say, were out and scrambling and attending to bigger outages. But after a series of phone calls and emails, by the end of the day, Thursday, PG had their electricity back on. So just a big thanks to PG for responding to a mayor's call for two businesses' help who seemed to get lost in the, you know, the timing of the fires and the windstorm. Today's meeting, as Paul mentioned, at the Washington County Coordinating Meeting focused on HB 2001 and HB 2003. Remember HB 2001 is the single-family housing zoning that requires middle housing to be developed inside of a single-family housing zoning, namely duplexes. HB 2003 is future planning. So where we went round and round today was, as Paul mentioned, on HB 2001, that there's very little flexibility from the rulemaking part that we're seeing as city mayors as far as how they want this implemented. I'll send you the slide deck from DLCD today because it was very interesting. One of the things that we have a big issue with is just picture, they have what's called, as I mentioned before, this performance rating system that they're going to measure your city on, on how you're meeting the goal of having middle housing. And they're envisioning that 80% of your lots will allow triplexes. 70% of your lots will allow quadplexes. 60% of your lots will allow townhomes. And 50% of your lots will hold cottage clusters, will allow cottage clusters. So the feeling of the cities and legal Oregon city is that these percentages are way too high and not realistic and leave very little flexibility for cities. As Council Morrison said before, you start putting a lot of the quadplexes and triplexes in along with their parking suggesting, you're just going to have a lot of pissed off people in a residential zone with a lot of cars on the street, on the sides, yards, all the stuff that we've seen go backwards or sideways in Portland. So there's a tremendous fear about these regulations or rules going forward. They're asking for comment from cities, counties, whatever, by September 21st. Wilsonville has a draft letter that I sent to Aquila, Garrett, and Sherilyn as a template for us and some of the things we're concerned with, obviously. As Paul mentioned, we might have to quickly get together, maybe a series of phone chats or something by the 21st and to react to some of these rules because they're just not realistic. As was mentioned, the rules seem to be written for Portland and not for the suburbs. And they also have been written for, with infill in mind versus greenfield. So more to come on that. It was a tough discussion today. The mayor's just beat up on the representative of some DLCD about these rules and suggested rules. When it got to HB 2003, it was a little bit quieter. HB 2003 has three items to it, that cities will need to do housing needs analysis. You have to basically look out 20 years and you have to do your needs analysis every six years. And I believe we pretty much could knock this out, got this done already with our 12th and 2040. You also have to maintain a billable lands inventory. And the third part of that is a housing production strategy. And I know this is, we mentioned in the consent agenda, that's where this consultant's going to help us out from DLCD to help us develop these three parts of HB 2003. I'm just looking at my notes here. So by June 30th of 2022, the state is requiring that your code has been updated to adapt and allow for all the items required by HB 2001. If your code isn't ready yet, you must adopt the state code. The code, the state has a sample code that is going to be finished up. I have a date here somewhere in my notes. They're going to have that wrapped up, the model code. The model code will be done, I think, by the summer of next year. I got, I got so many notes here. So we're looking at, you know, by June of 2022, we have to have our code ready to go to meet HB 2001 with all the fighting going back and forth about these regulations. That's enough of that because we're getting into the weeds here and getting late. I-205, the tolling open comment period has been extended. It originally was to the 16th, you now have to the 23rd to comment on the 205 tolling project. And so I encourage people to do that. We had an article in Towaltin Life about it, and ODA has put out the word, if you haven't done it yet, please give that feedback. What's next? And my last thing here is just a reminder on Wednesday, the 16th, at 4:30, the city is having its marijuana community meeting via Zoom to get the connection phone number and the link to that meeting. Go to the city's website, it's on the slider board that you can get those contact information. It begins on 4:30 on Wednesday and is a Zoom meeting. So the city can gather community feedback on the suggested alterations to our buffer zone. So I encourage folks to attend that meeting on Wednesday. And I think that's it. Quite a lot of stuff. Any other comments? But one thing I will mention is I'll shoot these, like I mentioned, I'll shoot the slide decks for HB 2001 slash 2003 from Mr. Colas, and I probably need to follow up with Sherilyn and staff on HB 2001. As Council Morrison said, I think we want to have some feedback for the state on how we feel about these suggested rules. Anything else?
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
About the, when you were discussing the mandated triplexes and duplexes, was that in new builds or also in infill as well?
Infill as well.
That's what I thought. Okay.
So one of the numbers they threw out is, because I asked them where they came up with these percentages, is that the average per that, per DLCD, 90% of the lots that are developable in the metro region are 5,000 square feet. And a 5,000 square foot lot per they, per their view holds a triplex. Look at Farley's face. Yeah, so a 5,000 square foot lot is perfectly suitable for a triplex. So this is the kind of rules that I know Garrett is part of the technical committee, I'm not putting him on the spot, but that we need to really go through these rules and get our feedback back to the state. Because some of these things are not going to work for a city our size and not going to work when you have to do planning in the future, as Mayor Knapp said. So therefore, I need to, when I'm going to do some of his master planning, which Wilsonville is well known for, I have to build an infrastructure for, for development that might have quite a few quadplexes in it. So I mean, I'm going to need massive pipes, I'm going to need massive roadways. Now, how am I supposed to plan for this? And that's the big discussion that we're going to have. Like Paul said, it's the hot potato between now and the end of the month to get our feedback to the state on what works and what doesn't work as part of these rules for 2001 and 2003.
And then if it's infilling from where it's already built, then it's planning in reverse.
Yeah, there was an example today, they said that in Portland, there was a lot where they called it a lot scrape, where it was a 5,000 square foot lot that they scraped the one home off of it and put three duplexes on it. And the problem with that is, okay, it's supposed to be affordable housing, each part of the duplex was $450,000.
I was going to say, I, I have a lot of people in Portland that are pretty upset with their infilling with very high end.
Right, this is not meeting the goal. This is not middle housing. $450,000 is not middle income housing.
No, it is not.
So the goal is laudable, but the implementation right now is questionable. Anything else?
Our, their neighborhood that we lived, the neighborhood we lived in Portland before we moved out here was going through a horrible problem with that. And it was infill with incredibly expensive housing and there was, there's no parking. There's just, it's a disaster and it's ruining neighborhoods. And I just wish that the people that put forward, for instance, HB 2001 realized that if we all wanted to live in the city of Portland in the Pearl, that's where we'd live. But we don't. And we need flexibility and we need self-governance out here to help determine the city's future and what we want the city to look like and what our residents want it to look like. And we do not need it shoved down our throat. And okay, I'm off my soapbox. Sorry about that.
I want to circle back to Council Morrison's comment about Mayor DeLynn and Cornelius. His example was the rulemaking folks are envisioning one vehicle per unit. And Mayor DeLynn said, reality is, if you have maybe a two or three bedroom unit and duplex, you might have two or three wagers in that house or that unit with three vehicles. And so if you're only zoning and regulating and allowing one vehicle per unit, where are these cars going to go? And as Counsel Morrison said, look at Portland, look what happened there where parking is at a premium on some of these streets. Find any, because the one slot you have in your duplex is not enough. So we got a
Well, and I'll
Go ahead, Nancy.
Yeah, I'll pile on that one more time because near where I work in Portland, there's an enormous amount of high density housing that's gone in in the last three years. I mean, so much I can't even begin to give you a number. But the people that are paying the price for the parking issue too are all of the businesses that are in and around there. Because when there is no parking and there's not a lot of neighborhood areas to get the parking handled, they're going into the business areas and the business sectors. And it is putting an enormous hardship on businesses in that area. And the same thing could happen here. So, I mean, we talk a lot about the communities and the neighborhoods and how oppressive it'll be for them, but it also is going to trickle into the business. Businesses are causing immense hardships there. And as we know, a lot of businesses in the core area now feel like they don't have the parking that they'd like to have and they don't have circulation in the parking spots that they'd like to have. And this will just compound that problem exponentially, so.
Yeah, that's all the cities are asking for, is some, a little bit more flexibility in these rules.
I can imagine. I can imagine what it's going to do to the sewer and water system.
I can't imagine what it's going to do to um the sewer and water systems either.
Yeah, way back when, I think I mentioned Commissioner Rogers. Mentioned the Clean Water Services. This is like a nightmare for them. That, you know, how they're going to scale communities when they have no idea uh what's going to be there. It's, like I said, everyone everyone wants middle housing. You want to have affordable housing. It's just about a little bit of flexibility and a little bit more forethought and planning on how we can implement this without. Be given be given, you know, here's how many percentages of your lots need to be quadplexes. Or allowed for quadplex, I should say. Doesn't have to be a quadplex, but you have to allow for eighty percent of your lots to have quad, you know, quadplexes on them. All right, Sherilyn, I saw your finger up.
Well, I I mean, to kind of riff off of something you said before, Mayor, I think we are well-positioned. We've done a housing needs analysis. And we've gotten this grant for the consultant and we're well-positioned to have our implementation, our code. Changes in place um by two thousand twenty-two. And so we and that'll be before you in just ongoing segments, so. Um and perhaps we can talk about this a little bit more in our small group briefings. Um this coming Friday and Monday and to that point, if I could get um Council President Grimes to stay on the line when this meeting's over. Uh just to talk to you about that for a little bit.
Well, like I said, I'll get those slide decks out to you, if not tonight, tomorrow, so you can review it on your own and. Start digging into the nasty details of this stuff. All right, with that, I have nothing else. Uh do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
And a motion of second to adjourn our council meeting for this evening. Any discussion on the motions? And I'll put that to say a higher raise your hands.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, opposed. All right, you have this. Thank you, everyone, for tonight and uh we'll be in discussions. I encourage everybody to attend the small group discussions, uh so we can keep up with things as they change daily. On land use regulations in this state.
Be well, everybody.
Good night.
Thank you.